Political science and my political science realm kind of brought me here. So I'm just trying to get a better grasp of what a local government looks like.
Very good. We'll try and we'll try and give you an educated guess as to what's going on.
I appreciate that.
You have all the rights of councilperson. You can take part in discussions, ask questions, whatever. The only thing that they don't allow you to do is vote.
That's fair.
We'll go from there. Next item is public comments for any item that is not on the agenda. Yes, sir.
Oh, is it working?
Oh, yeah.
Nice. Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Simon Wolf and I did an internship here for like six weeks now. Most of my time is spent at the Wartburg College doing an internship there with the media engineering staff and camera engineering. And I'm super thankful for being there or for had the opportunity to spend some time there. Also, I spend it also a lot of time at the newspaper, at the high school, at the elementary school, and try to honor this sister cityship between Eisenach and Waverly. That's the reason I am here. So I had a phone call with my mom today. She is the mayor of Eisenach, Lord Mayor, Katja Wolf. I told her shortly before I leave, I will talk to you today. And she said me like 4,000 times, I need to give you greetings, I need to thank you a lot because without this great sister cityship, it would not be possible that I stand here today. I try to honor this sister cityship also in my work at the newspaper, for example. When I write it, I wrote an article about my stay here. I must say, standing here in front of you is like the highest point of my stay here. And I'm a little bit nervous, but I'm thankful that you listen to me. I also want to thank you, my host family, Brancorst, that did a great job keeping me busy all the time. We had free time activities and they showed me around the area of Waverly and of Iowa. So we had an escape room experience. We were at the drag strip and they showed me like the American lifestyle and lifestyle. And I'm thankful to experience all of this. Yes, that's kind of what I wanted to say. I'm not prepared, but I want to say thank you from the deepest of my mind and of my heart.
Very good, Simon. Thank you.
Alles Gute.
Thank you for the opportunity to share a few thoughts with you. My name is Ed Zelli. I graduated from Waverly High School in 1943. Neil Smith graduated in 1944, so he was one year later than me. But we were together in school and shared many things because both of us were involved in the vocational agricultural programs. Now Neil isn't here to speak for himself and I certainly can't speak for him. But I would like to make a few comments about a program that was dear to his heart, Champion's Ridge. I believe that project had a lot of community support and interest, but I did not really experience the same interest or urgency on the part of many in this administration here in the city of Waverly. I was not in the community during much of Neil's adult life, but I know his quiet, caring nature was reflected in how he lived. He had no family of his own, but he was concerned about protecting the earth for those who came after him. He was very active in conservation projects, as is evidenced by the terracing that he did on the land which was set aside for Champion's Ridge. It was Neil's love for the community, his concern for children, that led to his dream of using part of his farm to benefit the community and its children. To encourage the project and get it underway, Neil agreed to sell the land to the city at a reduced price from its appraised agricultural value and perhaps even more value because of its location next to the developed part of Waverly. And he offered it and it was sold to the city at a price that probably saved the city from a third or more of a million dollars. He was very generous in this. After the Breamer County Fair Board agreed to build new fair facilities at the site, the city, and I think hesitantly because I was around at this time, finally decided to purchase the balance of the land and then charge the ball committee, which are the Champion Ridge Committee, to raise the money to pay for it. Now, the momentum for the project was slowed when the city of Waverly refused to give the fair gourd the deed for the land which they had purchased. And since the fair board couldn't proceed with building by not having the deed to the land, the plans was dead for some point and fundraising became difficult. I have not heard why the city would not give the deed to the Breamer County Fair Board after they had paid for the land so they could begin the construction. I can only surmise that the city had some hidden plan for the land other than the proper use for the Champion's Ridge. Now I have learned that there have been an individual and perhaps there were several individuals interested in the land and that the city could sell it to them for a profit and use the profit for other projects. I don't know if that's true or factual, but if it is, the city betrayed Neil Smith. Neil acted in good faith. I'm not sure that the city did. Well, if the council votes to build the youth ball diamonds on the alternate property, which I assume you will, I hope that Champion Ridge will survive in some form. Maybe with the fairgrounds to give them a home before they move to Chipola. And maybe the adult Bible or the adult diamonds, ball diamonds. And perhaps a nice recreational vehicle park at the upper end. That would be a real asset to the city. I believe the Champion Ridge project in some form still has wide city support. And if they get a clear shot at it, they can raise the fund to do it. Let's build it. Thank you, Mr. Zelli, for your comments. Anyone else has an item that they'd like to speak to the council and city about that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Which consists of the following items, and they will be acted upon by a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests a specific item be considered separately. Approve the purchase of a 2020 Polaris Ranger 1000 for the Vegetation Management Division of Leisure Services from Myers Polaris of Fairbank, Iowa for the purchase price $13,940. Pay request from VJ Engineering for the Cedar Lane Reconstruction 2019 for the amount of $9,849.69. Pay request from WHKS and Company for the WPC Facility Improvements 2020 for the amount of $17,730.24. Pay request from WHKS and Company for the Infrastructure Modeling, Water Distribution System and Sanitary Sewer Collection System 2019 for the amount of $1,730.64. Pay request from Stanley Consultants Incorporated for the Cedar River Parkway East Improvements 2018 for the amount of $15,423.10. A Class C liquor license for Prairie Links Golf and Event Center. A Class E liquor license for Fairway Stores Incorporated Number 561. A special Class C liquor license for Wortburg College. And a Class C beer permit for Quick Star Number 732. I would entertain a motion.
It's 752.
752, I'm sorry.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
I'd like to pull out the vehicle purchase item, please.
The Polaris Ranger.
Yeah.
Okay. We act upon balance of it.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
For the remaining items.
We need a second to pull the.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think you need one.
I don't think we do.
Doesn't make any difference. I don't think we need a second to pull an item.
Yeah. I don't ask for any.
So we have all items other than the vehicle for the Polaris management vehicle from Myers Polaris of Fairbank, Iowa. And other will act on items two through nine. All those in favor of the consent calendar say yes?
Yes.
Okay. Now discussion on item number one.
I was just wondering if staff could walk us through that a bit. I know we've received some communication about that and I think it'd be good for us to hear your view of it as well as let the public know what the thinking was so that we can just understand it better.
Sure. I think the communication you're talking about is we were contacted by the, one of the unsuccessful bidders wanting local preference to be initiated because the amount was minimal in their opinion, $120 difference. I don't disagree that, you know, we'd like to support our local businesses, but we have always taken low bid. You're talking about taxpayer dollars and until there is a local preference portion of our purchasing policy, which is very thin in itself enacted, I don't personally would want to change that. The other item that we looked at is the winning bid was actually a year newer. It's a 2020 model versus a 2019 model. The equivalent 2019 model would be more than $1,000 difference with the same bid, which is what was bid initially when we looked at the fund and the foundation that was going to provide a chunk of this purchase. So that is the preference of staffs to take low bid, especially since it is again a year newer model. They're accepted across the state. We see this version, this Polaris version everywhere. So it's not something foreign that we're bringing in that nobody uses. It's a very common piece of equipment. It's unfortunate that local bidders don't always win these, but you know, what is local, I guess, is the key too. I mean, if we start to only accept local bidding, then you will lose a lot of the competitive bid as well since there's only so many different vendors in town that offer some of these products. So our main goal was if you look apples to apples, well over $1,000 difference, not just 100. They also went a year newer and that's kind of the primary reason we want that route for at least recommending that to council.
So it's really about a $1,200 difference.
Yes.
So James, are you saying that we actually got bids on two different items? These two bids don't actually represent the same, the same piece of equipment?
It's the same piece of equipment from two different makes, two different makers, John Deere and Polaris. Polaris chose to bid a 2020 version instead of a 2019 and that is the smaller difference. If they were to bid at 2019 as they did initially when we were looking at estimating this, it was well over $1,000 difference, not 100 and some dollars difference. So we're still able to get a newer vehicle for even still less than what the older bid was.
Do other cities in the community have local preferences? I mean, for example, do the people, do the companies in Waverly get to bid on Fairbank purchases?
I don't know what Fairbank does. It's not for me to determine necessarily. Some cities have talked about it, but again, it raises the issue of what is a threshold? Is it $100? Is it 500? Is it 1,000? It is a percentage of the total. How do you establish what is fair? And say it's 5,000 and it turns out to be 5,005. Does that now get considered? Well, it's so close and cities have wrestled with this quite a few times. It comes up off and on. We get it every so often. And so the safest and easiest way for us to accomplish this is you take the absolute low bid that satisfies the bid requirements that were sent out. Both of these did. Low bidder is Polaris and that's the one that we were recommending. It's the easiest way to defend the use of tax dollars for this equipment.
I think Waterloo tried the local bidder process for a while and it just didn't work out for.
It's very possible.
So James, while we're on this, how wide a net does the city cast when we're asking for bids?
We try to stay within any dealers, obviously in Waverly and as far out as we can. We can't exclude anybody from bidding. So we put this out. If anybody asks for the bid documents, I can certainly certify and send a bid. And it's not uncommon for us to use state bids for trying to demine versus even local bids. And they always are lower in a sense. It's not an uncommon practice. Again, I understand the concerns, local preference, I do, but we're talking about tax dollars and we always try to go lowest possible bid that's responsible, that meets all the requirements. If it truly didn't meet the specs, we'd go to the next bid, which would have been this one, but it does.
I noticed there wasn't a comment about when it could be delivered from the local dealer either. The other ones had like a delivery date anticipated on it, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure the reasoning behind that. I just know we always ask for that and some provide, some don't.
All I know is that in our business, we're very often in a bid situation against out of state providers. And I've complained about that to the state legislature for a number of years. I suspect not just because of my complaints, but the state legislature did put in a point system for a number of contracts where if you were located in the state of Iowa, you were awarded extra points. And that went toward the total amount of bid. Whether that has helped the situation or not, the way I look at it is that if the out of state company can do it for a lower price, then they deserve to get the bid because they can do it for a lower price, even though I'm upset about not getting the business. I don't want to get the business just because I happen to be in state. The two issues I see with having a local preference policy is the first is it's going to be a very complicated policy because where do you draw the line of what is a de minimis amount? I mean, how much credit do you give for a local bid? Is it a percentage of the bid? Is it a dollar amount? And then the second issue is maybe one that we haven't really talked about is how do you determine who is actually a local bidder?
Correct.
You might have a company that is located, they might have an outlet in Waverly, but the home office could be in Des Moines or Omaha or Chicago. Is that a local bidder or is it not a local bidder? So these policies can get to be incredibly complex. And I think that just in terms of fairness to everyone involved, simply going with the lowest acceptable bid, I think is probably the best policy that we can have. And I understand, I really understand, you know, what they're talking about here and I sympathize with them. But you know, sometimes that's just the way that business goes.
I agree with that and the only reason I wanted to, or the main reason I wanted to pull it out was because we did receive the communication. I think it deserved discussion. And to me, the lowest bid of a difference of $200 would not make a difference. But you know, and that's just my personal judgment and everybody has their own threshold. But you know, a difference of, you know, over $1,000, $1,200, you know, to me is enough of a difference to justify, you know, not going local because we, you know, are also trying to balance that with fiscal responsibility.
I also feel that if we wanted to change the policy, we could discuss the policy, but I'm not a big fan of changing the rules after the bids are made. So I feel like if we were going to have some sort of a local preference on who we awarded bids to, that should be in place before we made the bid letting. It's kind of unfair to, you know, Polaris and Fairbank to change the rules after the bids were submitted.
And often you'll see a challenge from the lowest responsible bidder. If they're not local preference, how are we now being quote discriminated against, which is an ugly word, but they use it because we were the local bidder and you're affecting our sales? And then it goes back to again, what's local? Fairbank's not exactly four hours from here. It's not that far away and that is a difficult one. I agree with Rod is where do you draw that line? It's very touchy to do and it's very ugly. Lowest responsible bid has always been our practice in a sense to where it's the easiest for us to defend.
Okay. Are we ready to deal with item number one, the purchase of a 2020 Polaris? So I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the purchase of a 2020 Polaris Ranger, the whole thing. Carla, item one.
Just say item one.
Item one. Approval of item one.
Is there a second? Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All in favor of item number one, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? No? Item number one is also approved. Regular business. Item number one, Resolution 19-176. A resolution approving the area north of the soccer complex along Cedar River Parkway as a future location for youth ball diamonds. I would entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-176 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made in second. Council discussion?
I would like to thank the Ball Diamond Task Force for all the great work they did on this.
I'll second that.
Good evening. My name is Tina Miller. I reside at 100 Augusta Lane. I am a parent and a member of the Ball Field Task Force. First of all, I would like to thank the mayor and city council for your initial support of the task force and allowing us to explore viable options for youth ball fields in Waverly. This has been a very rewarding and eye-opening experience for me as my family is not currently involved in either baseball or softball. What you may or may not know about me is that I have 11-year-old twin boys who have cerebral palsy. They are happy, healthy boys who love to be outdoors and love to play baseball. But unfortunately, the current facilities throughout town are not easily accessible to them. My boys had a rough start with life and have had a lot of challenges along the way. One of those challenges is that they both use walkers to get around. So traversing the outdoors and playing with their friends can sometimes be very difficult. Grass fields, dirt infields, and outdated bathrooms and concession stands make it just about impossible for them to play ball on a real field alongside their peers and friends, just like other kids in town. Champion's Ridge was a great concept and the drawing showed a beautiful complex, but that project did not support the needs of my family or a lot of other families in our local community. The task force's recommendation for a youth ball field complex up of Cedar River Parkway does support those needs, however. The entire complex is on level ground and it includes a miracle field that would allow kids of all abilities to not only play, but to play together. So in closing, I ask for your support of our recommendation. And don't just do it for the kids, please do it for all kids. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Tina. Other comments from members of the audience? Council discussion, questions?
Yeah, I don't have any. Well, I do have a couple of questions for that too, but before I get to that, I do feel I want to respond even though I know we're not supposed to during public comment time, but I would like to respond a little bit to Ed Zelli. I listened carefully. I respect your opinion, but I do feel that it's important to also talk about facts. And if my facts are wrong from the research I've done, please correct me, someone. I did not know Neil Smith, but in all of the information that I looked at going way back over 10 years ago when this idea first came to fruition or started to become, to fruition, I never found anywhere where there was any record at least of Neil Smith wanting ball fields. What I found was that Neil Smith wanted the city to be able to do something productively for the city and for youth potentially. I also, as best as I can tell and information that I've gathered, and I'm repeating myself, but I feel it's important. I've said it at other meetings and in other conversations. The price of the land was maybe, as best as I can tell, slightly reduced, but pretty much in a range of fair market value. That doesn't say anything about, as far as I'm concerned and from what I know, you know, that Neil Smith wasn't generous. I'm sure he was. But I just want to explain the materials that we're looking at to come to the decision that I did and that others will have to explain how they got to theirs, but it was a vote to discontinue the agreement with Champion's Ridge. The deed, the fair deed, the agreement between the city and the fair explicitly states that the deed will be handed over when the land is paid for and when the fair has let us know when they will vacate Memorial Park. And we don't have that information yet. As a matter of fact, they just asked for a three-year extension in Memorial Park and we gave it to them.
Well, almost. We gave them two.
Excuse me, what did I say?
Three.
Oh, two. Yeah, I meant to say two. So thanks for that correction. And I'd please correct anything else I'm saying that is an opinion and that is fact. So I feel like the council has acted in good faith. We tried very hard again and again and again to see that beautiful plan come to fruition. And for over a decade, there appeared to be no progress. And when we asked for some types of information, it was either very difficult to get or we didn't get it at all. And again, it's a beautiful blueprint, but we weren't making progress on it. And so I just want to talk, I mean, I just want to say that because, you know, I respect, I respect what Ed Zelli said, but I also feel like it deserves a response where I see it differently or I think I know something differently. And so now what we have is an opportunity to gain momentum. If this doesn't gain momentum either, then we've got to look for something else. But I think to wait another 12 years to get ball diamonds going for, whether it's a miracle field for our handicapped children or special needs children or whether it's just getting decent fields in place for all of our youth is really, really important. And I think we need to be moving ahead on that. So I just want to say that as part of this discussion on this decision to, on this resolution.
I just want to make a couple of comments. I was able to attend most of the Ball Diamond Task Force meetings and they did very good work, very thorough, efficient, and thoughtful in their deliberations. I didn't know Neil Smith either. Where I have heard his name in another context is because I'm the city council rep on the senior center board. And he was generous toward the senior center board and we discuss him every time we talk about our budget and charitable contributions. So he was an altruistic individual and that is borne out in his contributions there. The other comment I would make is I've heard this rumor that the city council has had a hidden agenda all along about selling this land for a profit. And I certainly have never seen any evidence of that. I wasn't maybe invited to those meetings. But I know nothing about a plot to, what, subvert the Champion's Ridge efforts. I think that none of us took pleasure in the fact that that blueprint did not come to fruition. So I think that the task force has weighed the pros and cons of the new property versus the Champion's Ridge site. I think Tina is absolutely correct. You know, not only can her kids not play ball, they can't even go to the ball games because there are not disability accessible bathrooms, adequate parking, or terrain that they could easily use their walkers to walk across. And so I think that we have a great opportunity to make a fresh start and to have these ball diamonds within 18 months to 24 months and, you know, mother nature and fundraising permitting. But I think we need to move forward and this ties in with our next agenda item also of whether the task force should continue. But you know, I wholeheartedly would support us moving ahead.
I'll say too that, and I said the same thing about Champion's Ridge. I mean, I want to make clear that I, as one council member, would like to see a funding, and I know now's not the time, I know it's not possible, but I want to see a funding and business plan at a point in time plan at a point in time as soon as reasonably possible, that, and that we see that and discuss it and deliberate on it before, you know, we move forward with a full-fledged plan. I mean, it's the same thing I said about Champions Ridge, and I'll say it here again now, too. I mean, happy we're moving along. But just for the future, I want to be clear about that from my position. And I also wanted to ask staff a question about how much will a site plan cost? And because that's the next step, correct, in this part of, part of this.
Right. We have, I believe it's nine proposals from nine engineering firms that we're reviewing right now to determine who we will select. And we're hoping that in those different proposals that we will have some of that information. But again, they have to, I have not had a chance to look through them yet. It's been kind of a hectic week. And we just need to start getting through those to see who we're going to select to do the site plan, the grading plan itself. But we'll have that soon.
And that's something that will be paid by the city?
Yes.
If we approve it going forward?
If you approve it, correct.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Again, I know I voiced this before. Having us come back to the area by the soccer fields, it's not surprising to me. Again, that was, a project had been brought forward before to do that. And because of resistance in the community, the neighborhood more than the community, I think, and for good reasons. Again, I'm not, I don't want to come off that, you know, we didn't listen to the community, that type of thing. So my concern is, to me, this has totally changed the dynamic of the funding stream. This seems to be coming back to be a city project. And we had good partners that were willing to do that with Champions Ridge. So hopefully those same type of partnerships can be part of this. It just seems, knowing how we plan out strategic planning and the projects four, five, six years out, to me, it's going to be very hard for the next council to figure out how to fund this and have it playable in 18 months, just with what would have to go on the back burner. So I just want to caution folks that it's great if we move forward that fast. But as indicated, I think there needs to be some strong discussion on how it's funded, where the ownership of it lies, and what partnerships can be developed on this property.
And I think the task force is eager to get working on that. You know, once we see the numbers and know what it's going to cost for the first phase of developing the ground, I think that will be enlightening and we can move forward. But I'm optimistic that we can get it done.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll call, vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Jankow.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Wolfstein.
Yes.
Resolution 19-176, approving the area north of the soccer complex along Cedar River Parkway as a future site for youth ball diamonds, hereby approved 7-0. Resolution 19-183, a resolution approving the continuation of the Ball Diamond Task Force, further known as Task Force. I would entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-183 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. To approve the continuation of the Ball Diamond Task Force, a council discussion. Questions?
And these people have agreed to continue their service on the task force?
Yes, they have.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up in the background.
Good. Because I don't, I don't, I always feel uncomfortable having people on a task force that's for a limited service time and then find out that their, that their duty has been extended for, for God knows how long.
No. They, at the last task force meeting, I specifically asked and requested, and they all readily agreed. And I think it's very important to keep that group together because they have put in a lot of work already. And their job is just beginning in some, in some forms. So thank you all for agreeing. Hopefully the council will see to it. Any other discussion?
My only comment again is, because of my history with Champions Ridge, is back when that task force was put together, the charge was to look at all ball programs, including adults. So I hope at some point in the very near future, once we have a solid direction on the youth side of things, the council will put together a similar task force for the adults so that we can reinforce that we care about all the ball programs.
And I think that was discussed numerous times at the task force. I think that we want to be realistic and we want to be fiscally responsive, but we want to get something done, something started. And I think showing the community that we're breaking ground, that this is moving forward, I think that's going to inspire future phases of this. So I don't want the adult players to feel like they were forgotten in the process because they weren't.
Other discussion? Questions?
I noticed that the, the enumeration of individuals to be in the task force includes also a member of city staff. No one from council. Was that intentional? Or are there?
Two council people.
There are two council people.
They haven't been named yet, so.
That's what I didn't notice. Okay. So we're going to be thanking these anonymous council people also. Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Seven total, two, two council.
I got it. All right.
Okay. Roll call, vote, please.
Jankow.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Wolfstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Resolution 19-183, approving the continuation of the Ball Diamond Task Force, is hereby approved 7-0. Next item is the Leisure Services Commission update. So whoever is in charge of that will give some task force members. Hello.
Hello. I'm Randy Niderf. I've been tasked to deliver the Leisure Services Commission report to the city council. We meet, our commission meets every third Thursday of the month at seven o'clock in these council chambers. Anybody's welcome to attend. The members are myself, Joel Johnson, James Carver, Derek Soheim, Brian Pins, Tara Winter, and Sharon Cashman. And Brian is our representative. Our responsibilities are parks, the Harlington Cemetery, swim and pool, civic center, dog park, vegetation management, trails, forestry, public properties, central business districts, and R O W. The Leisure Services staff is the director, of course, is Garrett. Office manager is Jen Trona. The government building superintendent, Shane, Shane Pothas, I don't know how to pronounce that. The public grounds superintendent, Paw Chevelle. Parks, grounds, maintenance specialist, Corey Peterson, vegetation management. The grounds and maintenance specialist lead is Eric Schers. The ground maintenance specialist is Patrick Reinfield. The cemetery maintenance, John Karstens. The civic center custodian, Amy Epley. And there's 53 seasonal park time staff. And there is a picture of the hard-working individuals. Our departmental mission statement, we believe in making the good life better by providing safe, modern, well-maintained, and aesthetically pleasing environments for the community of today and tomorrow. In other words, leave it better than you found it. Our powers were advisory, advisory. To recommend to the city council a budget providing for the operations of Leisure Services Department, including cemetery, swimming pool, and public grounds and maintenance. We recommend to the city council the establishment of fees for certain activities of the Leisure Services Department. And to recommend to the city council policies for the operation of all functions under the jurisdiction of the Leisure Services Department. And to recommend to the city council a long-term capital improvement program for leisure services facilities, including the acquisitions of park sites. And to promote leisure services activities which will benefit all the citizens of Waverly. Some of, some of the accomplishments of the Leisure Services, the tree planting projects, hazard tree removals, completed trailhead project, Coleman Park Play Unit inclusiveness project completed, South Riverside Park enhancement restoration project, which is, which is continuing. The dog park sidewalk completed, and special thanks to the Harveys on that one. Replacement pickup and out front mower for Parks Department. Installed fence along the face of the crypt at the cemetery. Awarded grant for the wind structure, completed walkability assessment, rolling hills, basketball court, new leisure services monthly newsletter. Some of the highlights, highlights is tabs, retirement on May 13th. Garrett's new leisure services director, Garrett has our new leisure services director, hired Jen Trona as office manager, hired Patrick Reincliff, vegetation management, and Sharon Cashman, which will be resigning from the Leisure Services Commission after 20 years of service. There's pictures of the purchase of the equipment. The rail trail head, which I think is amazing. And the cemetery crypt fence. And the dog park sidewalk, which is also amazing. Some of the challenges moving forward, the current ball diamond maintenance, you can see where there's additional 1,100 more hours of maintenance in 2019. Ash trees, policies to handle private ash trees, finding enough quality seasonal staff, continued heavy workload for staff, cemetery weed control, and a 50-year-old pool. Future, ball diamond project, South Riverside Park and Exchange Building completion, park and open space plan update, policy for private ash trees, maintenance on Parkway, increased foundation funds, to increase the foundation funds. And to thank you, the commission recognizes the dedication and support of the city council to the activities and facilities the community has available for the leisure time. The commission hopes to continue to improve the quality of life of the citizens of Waverly by preserving the natural areas and the facilities for their citizens of today and the future.
Would you make a comment, expand a little bit on this wind sculpture? That may be news to virtually everyone, or a good share of the people. Not sure if that's, I know we're accused of having lots of bags of hot air, but I'm not sure if that's what that refers to or not.
I think we've discussed this in the last couple meetings, of the last one I missed. But I think we've obtained a wind structure and we're trying to find the perfect placement for it. I don't know exactly where we ended up, Garrett, on that.
I believe we had a grant for it. So this is not city dollars being paid for this statue. So.
That's correct. We got a grant for $1,200 for a wind sculpture. The original proposal was to have it placed in the Big Six. A couple meetings ago at Leisure Services Commission, we started discussing about possibly putting it in a different park. And so the discussion continues at this point as to where we're actually going to put it. It has not been ordered yet. It will be ordered sometime this winter for installation in the spring.
For us uninitiated, what is a wind sculpture?
I guess the best way to describe it is, the one that we're looking at is kind of like an orb. And then it, when the wind blows, it turns. So yeah, there's just, there's a lot of rotating parts.
They're kind of referred to as dynamic sculptures. So they move in the wind and they have some nice kind of moving lines.
It's like a big pinwheel? Or what are we talking?
They're pretty cool. That would be the most basic, but I think the one we have is a little more special to that. I don't want to ruin the entire surprise.
No, no. Revealing some of the.
Well, if it's a surprise, I'll withdraw the question.
Could you comment on the increased number of hours needed for maintenance of ball diamonds?
Yes. Most of it is because of, for this latest season, Parks took over the maintenance of the Kiwanis Fields, Kiwanis Exchange, all of those fields down there. I remember Dan. That is the, the main reason for the jump because that's, it's twice the number of fields. Plus, there were more practices, more games than in previous years. That does also include Bergen or Murals because they use the diamonds at Memorial Park. And then also the adult softball leagues, they use the diamonds at Memorial Park as well.
And Garrett, who was doing the maintenance before?
The associations.
The actual associations. And I think, if I recall correctly, you hired, was there a part-time person that you hired to help with some of that?
We actually hired three. The problem was that they were all in high school. And so we had a really tough time at the beginning of the season getting the maintenance done without our full-time staff or seasonals doing it. So yes, they, we did hire three that they kind of rotated through as to when they could drag the fields and work the fields.
And how much of the ball diamond prep, that type of thing is covered by user fees? Is that only on the Memorial Park or?
Yes. Council had decided, I don't remember when it was, last year, that the quote rec programs would not be charged for any games, any maintenance on the field. Any of the traveling teams would be charged if they were at Memorial Park. But if they were still at Kiwanis Exchange, they would not be charged.
Any other questions regarding the Leisure Services update? Very none. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your support.
I think the next one is to Resolution approving the support, Resolution 19-182, resolution approving the support and financial commitment from the city of Waverly for the Main Street program in Waverly. I would entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-182 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. See, there's two fine gentlemen here. I would guess that at least one of them would like to
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
................................................................................................ And I just want to share a few quick statistics that you have helped accomplish in this town along with our residents and business owners. These numbers go back to the first of January of 86, and since that time through August, we have had 110 business starts, relocations, or expansions, 306 net new jobs, 537 building projects, $24 million in private dollars invested, 83 buildings change hands, $8.5 million in acquisitions, and over 92,000 volunteer hours through the Waverly Main Street Program. We appreciate your leadership, we appreciate your advocacy, we also really appreciate the annual financial contribution. This year's budget, that was $25,000, and that is a significant investment that you make in the Main Street District. So we appreciate that, and we welcome any questions that you have. Travis will answer those.
So the $25,000, is that a consistent figure? Are we up from last year, or how are we looking with that?
No, that's a consistent figure. So in total, we request $45,000 from the city in the fiscal budget. $10,000 goes towards your membership with the Chamber, $10,000 of it goes to pay for tourism efforts on the city's behalf, and then the remaining $25,000 goes towards the Main Street Program.
Now, what region, what part of the city constitutes the Main Street District?
Good question. So it's Bremer Avenue from 7th to 7th, basically, with a few areas with blocks below, south or north of Bremer Avenue. Places like where the old Kuna Building is, is deemed to be in the Main Street District. I believe City Hall is in the Main Street District, the old middle school. Some of those places that are just slightly off of Bremer Avenue are still in the district.
So when you were quoting all of the businesses, then is that specifically in the Main Street District?
That's correct.
I think one of the statistics that I've always found, kind of, you overlook it, I mean, you think Kuna Mutual, the hospital, the colleges being the three large employers in town, but when you put all of the full-time, part-time opportunities on Main Street in there, they rise up into that top two or three fairly quickly.
Yeah, and actually...
Individually, they don't maybe get recognized, but as a district, there certainly is a lot of impact there.
The Main Street District itself, cumulatively with all their businesses and employment opportunities, are the largest employer in Waverly.
So Travis, the Main Street Project is administered through the Chamber of Commerce? Is that the correct way to say that?
It is. They were two separate programs initially, and then there was a lot of support in combining the two, because two organizations were basically chasing the same money in town. And so I think Waverly was one of the first communities in the state to actually combine their Chamber and Main Street together, under the Chamber umbrella. So the 501(c)(3) that would normally have gone with the Main Street District left, and it's now under the 501(c)(6) that the Chamber has.
So, which raised the question for me, businesses that do not belong to the Chamber still stand to benefit from this program? Is that fair?
Absolutely. That's correct. Businesses that are located in the Main Street District, yes.
So I was reading through the contract here, and, don't snicker.
I'm sorry. I did too, but I'm sure I didn't read it the same way you did.
I guess, I have a couple of questions here. It looks like the primary focus of the Main Street Program is marketing? Is that, would that be fair?
Well, it's one of the aspects of the Main Street Program. It's, there's a four-point approach that the National Main Street Center actually asks us to philosophically incur in our organization, and marketing is definitely one of them, for sure. But there's also retail support, there's design and beautification support, and, yeah, but it's just one aspect, business development, yeah, economic revitalization.
All right. So it, I guess, I'm struggling with trying to get my head wrapped around what the Main Street Program actually does. I don't know if you've ever, I know you've done a presentation on the Chamber, and I'm not sure in the year, year and a half that I've been on council, if there's been a presentation on the Main Street Program. I think it might be helpful, maybe if we could take some time on a, maybe a study session or something, and just see what the Main Street Program does. Or if the council doesn't want to take the time on that, maybe Travis and I can just visit.
Sure, absolutely.
I want to spend the time tonight to do that. But I noticed a few things here in the contract. For example, it requires that we employ a full-time, paid, full-time executive director and a number of other staffing requirements in here. Is that folded into the Chamber then? I would assume that you are the executive director of the Main Street Program also, and the Chamber employees are also employees of the Main Street Program.
That would be correct, yes.
And isn't that kind of what you were saying in terms of, at least as I understood it, that one of the motivations for bringing the two together was to be more financially efficient, I guess?
That's correct.
So I do recall, we did have a separate, full-time-staffed Main Street Director.
Yep.
And my guess is, is that there's a tremendous amount of overlap. The Chamber would be a much larger area of responsibility than the Main Street, which would be more focused, but the Main Street organization still consists entirely within that Chamber focus, so.
That's correct.
Is there ever any issue about delegating time and effort between the Main Street and the Chamber, because the Chamber's focus is much broader than just the Main Street?
Yeah, and you asked me that back in January during Budget Session.
You did.
I'm happy to answer it again, though.
That was a good question.
It's an education point that I try to let businesses know, that we are a community-wide Chamber with downtown responsibilities, and that's really, you know, how we look at it at the Chamber of Commerce. If you're asking how we delegate our time between Main Street and Chamber, it's also mingled together, because a lot of the things that we do for the Main Street effort, we also do on the community-wide scale as well. And so a lot of the principles that apply to the Main Street Program, or the Main Street philosophy, also apply to other areas of town. So we, as a Chamber, have taken that philosophy and just said, we're not only going to apply it to our Main Street District, but we're going to try to see where else we can apply it throughout the community. So because of that, all the responsibilities and things that we do as staff is so intermingled that it's hard to say how many hours we spend on each program.
So a lot of the things that, the resources that you have through the Main Street Program really kind of bleed over to what you're doing as a Chamber, even areas that are outside the Main Street Program.
Absolutely. And I would also say too, vice versa, where we are members of the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, and we have resources from them that we utilize for the Chamber side, can also apply to what we do on the Main Street side as well.
And then one final question. And, you know, I've always been impressed with the ability of the downtown area to stay occupied. And you look at a lot of towns the size of Waverly and smaller, and their downtown is shuttered, and broken windows and plywood, and it's failing, but we have always been able to keep our storefronts open and thriving. Not always the same stores, but they've always been full. Would you say that a lot of that is due? The thrust of my question is, how effective would you say the Main Street Program is in keeping those storefronts full and recruiting small businesses and small retail people to come into those storefronts in our downtown area?
Well, I think you just said it yourself. Waverly, you know, stands out as a poster community for the Main Street Program and the effects that it has on a downtown district. And so I would say, yes, the Main Street Program is vital to that. There are other communities that do that on their own, without being a part of the Main Street Program, but it takes a lot of investment, a lot of community effort. They don't have access to some of the grants and fundings and resources that we have through the Main Street Program, but they're still able to do it, but they're far and few in between. So the fact that Waverly was a Kickstarter for the Main Street Program back a long time ago during Governor Branson's first term, or first administration, it was, it proved itself worthy. And the Main Street Program nationwide, no matter the economic market, or the presidential administration, whatever the case may be, this is an economic development program that works, no matter what the environment is. It's economic development through the context of historic preservation. So when you're giving, you know, these buildings more taxable value, and bringing more life to a downtown area that might have been lost or forgotten, it's always going to prove itself worthy.
So I would assume that you would agree that this $25,000 is money well spent?
Absolutely, every penny.
Now, is it fair to say that the facade improvement grants that we gave a short time ago were in support of the Main Street Program?
I would say so, yeah, absolutely. It was in conjunction. We have our own facade improvement program at the Chamber. We allot $4,000 out of our budget to that, and that's businesses anywhere in town, and not just in Main Street. But certainly having the city's support in creating an additional facade improvement program in and of itself with larger dollar amounts was vital to help businesses get some of those bigger dollar projects done. So, thank you for that. We really do appreciate it.
So Travis, just a matter of curiosity, when we have a business in the downtown area that vacates, are there businesses waiting in line to move in there, or is this difficult to remedy that when you get an empty storefront?
Yes. No, the answer is that we do have a Business Development Committee, which is a part of the four-point approach for the Main Street Program, that actually looks at the empty storefronts that we have, and not only in the Main Street District, but throughout the community, and tries to determine what would be a good fit of business in that space, given its proximity to streets, certain streets in town, different businesses that might be surrounding it, that kind of thing. And then that committee actually goes out and actively tries to recruit businesses to come and fill those spaces. So I think that's a part of why you see spaces in Waverly not take so long to fill after they become vacated, for sure. You know, just to go back to Rod, to your point about learning more about the Main Street Program, Main Street Iowa does hold a quarterly orientation, and it's open to anybody that would like to know more about the Main Street Program. So I will certainly make sure to send that invitation out to council, as well as our board, who we also invite to that. And if you'd like to attend, we'd be more than happy to sign you up for that. It's a really great, actually, we make all of our board chairs go through it, and it's a great orientation. You'll definitely come back well-educated.
Did you see your day?
Yeah.
That way I won't ask you the same question over and over and over again.
Looking forward to it.
I did want to thank you for kind of acknowledging the fact that you have this nice interplay between Main Street development and the rest of the Waverly community. I think that city council and city administration has taken grief recently for putting too much money into the downtown and neglecting other areas of town like 4th Street and 10th Avenue. And I'd really like to be reminded that a healthy downtown means healthy business throughout the community. So some of those areas of town feel like somehow they're being neglected, you know, this is development that's good for the entire town. And I appreciate you kind of acknowledging that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions or comments for Travis or Phil? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Kingas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Walt's tank.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Green Cap.
Yes. Resolution 19-182, approving support and financial commitment from the City of Waverly for the Main Street Program in Waverly hereby approved 7-0. Thank you again, gentlemen.
Thank you so much for your support. Appreciate it.
Resolution 19-162, a resolution approving a revised development agreement with Fort Queens Real Estate LLC. Finishing the motion.
I would move resolution 19-162 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
I don't have an issue with the revised agreement, but since we're reopening the development agreement, I was wondering if we could put in a provision of having Fort Queens put a pedestrian crossing sign, or a pedestrian warning sign, as they exit by their drive-through window. I've had a number of people who have told me that they claim came close to being hit while they were walking down the sidewalk as cars were exiting the drive-in window, and people are usually happily munching on their ice cream, I guess, instead of paying attention to pedestrians that are walking down the sidewalk, because the building is very close to the sidewalk. There's not a lot of warning space between moving the sidewalk. I think we'd just take a sign as people were exiting, and I know it's probably not something that is going to solve every single problem, but I think just having a warning sign there on the corner that exiting vehicles should be aware of pedestrians.
Mr. Nagel has already told me that he has three separate signs that he's going to be putting up at the drive-in location for the cars that are crossing the sidewalk.
Right.
Actually, I think there's one to warn the pedestrians about vehicles.
That would be good, but most pedestrians, usually small children, aren't paying attention to signs anyway.
So I don't, I'm not sure why that hasn't gotten up yet, but I'm guessing it might go up after he opens in the spring. But I know he said that he had those signs, and they were going to be available to put up.
Okay, great.
Are they going to be painting arrows on their exit?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. As you say, it looked like the main changes to this from the original one were that we changed the steel bollards to limestone, and that they're going to pitch in $2,500 for the brick work. That looked like it was a difference, a change from the first.
Yes, and that's the two, the two main changes. The bollards really weren't probably going to fit in with whatever we did on the backside when the bridge is redone, and we want to redo that place, or that part of it, and put the trail in. So we decided to order limestone block. They're probably going to be put in this week, or next week. We got the gravel basin back there, and they're pretty big, bigger than expected. So we've talked about how we would use those in the future when we're redoing. They're going to be used within the project, and they may be moved around later on, but they should be big enough to stop about anything you can imagine.
It's like Easter Island longer.
They're different shaped heads, or whatever. They're pretty flat, which means they would be available for people to sit on, I think, too, and actually work fairly well for that when they're sitting out in the backside, when it gets warmer, again, next spring, when they, when they open up again in the spring. So I think that's a better, because I think the bollards, we would have thought, didn't really work as well, and we know we can use the blocks, so we'll have those available.
They'll stop a car.
Yeah, they'll stop a truck.
Even if they're eating ice cream.
The brick work became kind of an interesting thing, because most of the brick work that's going to be done is really for our benefit, for our streetscape on that corner up front, 10 by 10 square. And they were looking at some of the project estimates that they were getting to do the bricks, and then we were talking about what we would contribute to them, and instead, what we said was, we think we'll have a better chance of getting a better deal to do the brickwork ourself and have them contribute. So that's about a third of what the estimate was for doing the brickwork under their estimate, and we think we're going to get probably better, we'll probably do better than that when we do it. We also want to do some things, we didn't want to do it right away, and just, we want to finish the signage and maybe some flower beds, or planters, that kind of thing out there, maybe a signage for the area. So we're still planning that aspect, so we didn't want to jump into that right away. So we'll be doing that next spring when we do the rest of the streetscape, so it'll be part of that project.
That's on the corner there by the stoplight.
Yes.
My only comment about the bricks is, just make sure, as well, before my mishap walker, downtown, they tend to accumulate puddles that freeze, and then they're slippery.
Well, we're hopeful that there's a sidewalk around it, so they don't have to use the bricks.
Can dodge that.
If they do that, they'll be cutting across. We're anxious to use some of the bricks that they uncovered when they were doing the parking lot, and we don't think we'll have enough to do all of that work, but we have a lot of Bremer Avenue bricks. And so we're hoping to maybe use a variety of shapes, or sizes, and names, and colors, and things, so it'll be kind of a display of the different kinds of bricks we found when we were uncovering Bremer Avenue, too. So there's about five different brands, I think, of brick that we located.
So Bill, you're saying that this is a seasonal operation? When do they close? When do they open up again?
It's in November.
It was November 17th. It was on the sign, I saw.
Oh, okay.
17.
17, I think.
And as far as, you talked about signage, and that northwest corner, is the city going to take responsibility for what goes into that?
Well, we're looking at pedestrian signage. It's like a historic sign that you can see when you're standing up and walking by and Well, we're looking at pedestrian signage. It's like a historic sign that you can see when you're standing up and walking by and looking at it, not something from the road. So, it's not going to be big enough to cause any...
You're going to put something there that talks about why the building used to be significant?
We haven't decided really what's going to be going there, but I think paying homage to the fact that they've restored that building very beautifully would be one of the things we'd put on that. I know there's a stone that has a plaque on it about a conductor or somebody that, and we salvaged that from down the hill a little bit. And so, we wouldn't mind finding a location for that, too. It's just, I think mostly we'd like to highlight that historic building.
I think I'd put those things over by the trail rather than on the corner, because you're going to get a lot more foot traffic. I think it'd be more interesting having it by the trail.
We made, we're going to kind of wait until we have that, the backside, when we're able to do that after the bridge is replaced. Otherwise, we don't know what's going to happen to that whole bank side. That's the area that we can put our switchback trail down to the water. And there's a lot of different things to consider for that at this point. So, it may be a temporary sign up front, and then maybe moved to a different location later on. But I'm excited to get it, we unfortunately didn't get it done before the, when the river, or the weather's turned pretty cold. They got a little bit done last week, and we'll get enough done that we'll protect it and have a ability to protect our people from sliding off the edge.
I do feel an obligation to let you know that my son works at Fort Queens, so if anyone thinks we're in a conflict of interest, I cannot vote on this.
So, he's going to be out of a job here soon.
Yeah, I think he's looking forward to it.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Rafi.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Kingas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Resolution 19-162, approving the revised development agreement with Fort Queens Real Estate LLC is hereby approved. Resolution 19-177, approving the option tower and ground space lease agreement in accompanying First Amendment to the city's West Water Tower lease agreement between the city and USC OC of Greater Iowa LLC, in other words, US Cellular. Entertaining a motion.
Move approval of resolution 19-177, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion.
Is the building that's mentioned, is that new in that addendum? Yeah, it mentioned a building, I thought.
I don't think that's new. I think the main change, we've been seeing, am I correct you if I'm wrong, is they're just looking at more power into what they're putting on the water tower itself. I don't think the building is part of the new agreement, but again, I'll defer to Mike.
Typically, we do not have equipment upgrades and stuff listed in the lease agreement that. What they're doing is they're leasing a space, and so, it is usually a staff review and approval process in regards to upgrading their telecommunications equipment. For whatever reason, they have this written into the lease agreement, what their equipment is. So, anytime they go and make upgrades or changes to it, in effect, it amounts to a revision to the lease. And that requires council approval, the way it's structured. So, we don't have any concerns with what they're proposing to do. I guess, to, what they're proposing to do, in layman's terms, is more power.
Right, but what does it, what does it look like? I mean, it sounds like there are additional pieces that will be on the water tower, and then I, and then I'm pretty sure I read somewhere something about a building.
Equipment shelter? That's in the original lease?
No, it's in the, I thought it was in the B1 section.
So, again, as long as they're, they lease a piece of ground at the bottom, as long as they stay within that footprint, and they're not doing anything that adversely affects our operations or the operations of other tenants. You know, we have five, five spaces, five parcels on the ground that we lease.
Yeah.
As long as they stay within that, we've reviewed and approved updates. So, one of the things that most of them have done is they've added generators, so they have standby power. Also, as communication equipment changes, a lot of times they swap out the antennas that are up on top, and they go to different arrays up above. So, a lot of this is just, you know, we've gone through 1G, 2G, 3G, now we're looking at 5G. So, those are the upgrades that they've taken, have taken place over the last 20-plus years.
Right, I get all that. I'm just asking, will it look a lot different?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
It's like answering, "No."
Huh? What?
It's the same.
Okay. Top of the, you're wondering if it's going to look different.
Yeah, I mean, I could, I mean, I'm not saying this is what's happening, but I don't think it's, how should I say, it doesn't necessarily have to be a totally neutral thing in terms of getting more power. I mean, it may look like, you know, it may look weird. I don't know.
And they only have so much space to work with, and so, as long as they stay within there, there's not much we can do, and all we can put in like clown face or anything up there.
You know, there's a lot of debate about different kinds of towers, you know, and how they look, and I'm just asking a question, will it look different?
I'm not sure if it's as drastic.
And I thought I saw something about a building.
You know, a millennium, going from a circular communication dish to a rectangular communication dish.
Probably not.
I think it's okay, but, no, I don't know what it's going to appear to be. I don't know if we have visuals from there, or what it might look like. We can track that down.
No, it's not worth doing that if you're okay with it, but I guess I'm just saying that, yeah. I was actually looking forward to a picture, but never saw one.
So, the fee paid to the city does not change, Mike? Is that fair? Is that right?
They reassess every five years, I think.
The lease, the payment for the lease remains the same, on the same schedule.
And when we renew it, does it tend to go up sometimes?
We have, I believe it's built into the lease agreement, that every five years it increases, I think it's at 15%.
Something like that, yeah.
Honestly, I've been in California and see cell phone towers described as decorated as pine trees and palm trees, and obviously putting on the water tower makes as much sense as anything.
Right, we disguise it as a water tower.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're actually building, designing water towers with this purpose in mind. So, with those water towers, they can do some things so that it kind of blends in a little more, if the water tower's designed with the idea that they're going to mount antennas on.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Rafi.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Kingas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Resolution 19-177, approving the option tower and ground space lease agreement is hereby approved. Resolution 19-178, approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance from Boomerang Corporation for the East Breamer Avenue sanitary extension, sewer extension 2019 project, and authorizing the mayor to sign the document. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of resolution 19-178, approving contract bonds and certificate of the insurance from Boomerang Corporation of Anamosa, Iowa, for the East Breamer Avenue sanitary sewer extension 2019 project, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion, questions?
Just thinking of school, we're doing business with a boomerang corporation.
Yeah, well, I was the one who got to read the boomerangs, so.
In the breakout of the funding sources, what does, what does local funding mean? Laws?
Now, maybe, we will probably borrow to incorporate this, and TIF may pay it back then. Then we may have, again, connection fees or hook-on fees, which would be from a local company's hooking in.
The borrowing, you mean, a commercial borrowing from a bank?
Probably like a geo bond of some sort, paid back with TIF funds.
Okay.
Instead of taxes themselves, it'd be through TIF. At least the balance of what's needed once the connection fees are put on, anybody else that gets on to it.
Because this was on budget, and you're taking it from surplus, and then you're going to reestablish.
Correct, backfilling. Yes, sir.
Okay. And how is it in alignment with the comprehensive land use plan?
Well, the property that it's being, that's servicing, to go out to services, within the city plan, and it was under the comprehensive plan, it's actually mixed-use, commercial and industrial. So, we're just extending the service out to those available areas that are within the city limits.
So, in the comprehensive land use plan, it's mixed-use? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
This is the area where Titan's going?
This is, yeah, where Titan's, right.
Yeah, there was just, there was a rationale, there was a mention made of it being consistent with the comprehensive land use plan, and...
There's 35 acres that was rezoned to industrial, light industrial, so it would be available for development of the rest of that site. And there's also some land next to Nutrien that has, that would be available to connect to this sewer. And we did set connection fees, the only guaranteed connection fee is Titan's connection fee when they connect, but if anybody else connected, there would be fees that would be collected.
So, I guess I just have one more question about the bonding on this. Would we be issuing additional general allegation balance bonds then to pay for this?
Potentially is.
Is it time to do that in the amount of time that we have to fund this project?
Unlike Sid, we'll do a resolution to allow us to reimburse back the fund that this is pulled from, because this will be done hopefully by the end of the year, at least, putting it through the ground. And so, it's a reimbursement resolution. When you anticipate bonding in a certain amount of time prior eligible costs such as this, engineering could do it anytime without a resolution, but costs such as this can be done, a simple resolution for reimbursement of them from the bond.
And then we do the bond later on and put, and reimburse the fund.
Pay back the fund that we took it from. It's not the way we'd like to do it, but this was kind of an opportunity to help this occur, since they're planning to be out there in the early spring.
That's why I was concerned, because I knew we were kind of doing this as a, as a very tight schedule.
Yeah, it complicates things a little bit, but we'll find a way, so.
In order to meet their, the Titans criteria, they would have had to do a septic system.
Yeah.
And so, it makes more sense to just try to get that sewer main out there instead of having another septic system.
Right. Yeah, I'm not questioning the procedure for, or the unresolvedness, I guess I just wanted to make sure I understood the procedure for how we were funding it.
Yeah, it's not something we do often, but once in a while, we will have this occur just because of the simple timing of it.
Right. Again, this won't be a single bond for $200,000. This will be part of whatever the ask is for next month.
Be part of whatever project work you'd like to accomplish, anything that'll fold in this.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Cher.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Kingas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Resolution 19-178, approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance for Boomerang Corp. for the East Sanitary Sewer Project is hereby approved. Resolution 19-179, a resolution accepting the sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation 2019 project is complete, and approving pay estimate number two as the final pay request to Josh's Construction. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 19-179, accepting the sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation 2019 project as complete, and approving pay estimate number two in the amount of $7,559.30 as the final pay request to Josh's Construction of Dubuque, Iowa.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion.
I was hoping for more pictures. I got one picture.
It's not a real photogenic process. It's kind of what you see is what you get there.
Tough for a drone to get those.
Yeah.
Roll call vote, please.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Kingas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Resolution 19-179, accepting the sanitary sewer manhole rehab project is complete,
hereby approved. Resolution 19-180, a resolution accepting the Cedar River Parkway East Improvements 2018 project is complete, approving contract modification number seven, approving contract modification eight, and approving pay application number 22 as the final payment to Kramer and Associates. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 19-180, accepting the Cedar River Parkway East Improvements 2018 project as complete, approving contract modification seven in the amount of $4,198.8 increase, approving contract modification eight in the amount of a $17,253.31 decrease, and approving pay application number 22 in the amount of $558,163.64 as the final payment to Kramer and Associates of Graham's, Iowa.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion.
It's a big deal to have that complete, so.
And under budget, so that was real nice.
I guess that was my question. This does close it out. We don't have any lingering things in round numbers. We're about 240,000 under budget.
We still haven't finalized the engineering agreement, but this is, it's, the engineering is not going to go over budget, and this assumes that budget. So, what I want to draw attention to is that we began this process almost three years ago. January of 2017 is when we entered into the engineering agreement. So, we're going on three years. $10 million project, $8 million construction. The other $2 million is engineering and acquisition. And on the construction contract side, $8 million project and worth $336,000 in decreased contract quantity. Overall, on a $10 million project, we're in the neighborhood of a $235,000 below budget for a project that took three years, nearly three years, in the time we entered into the engineering agreement. I think that's pretty impressive.
So, yes, Dan, we are done.
I'm always glad to be able to vote on approving something that includes a reduction in anticipated cost, but I always wonder what typically happens to cause the cost to be less than we thought it was going to be.
One of the major concerns and unknowns going into this was the geology of the rock underneath the river that the bridge piers were going to be sitting on. And so, the approach that was taken is that we're going to assume a more, a more challenging construction. We're going to assume the worst-case scenario, and that there's only so much you can do in the preliminary field investigation. You know, even though we took soil borings and did a lot of geology work on it, there was a lot of, don't really know, could go one way or the other. And so, we assumed that it was going to be the worst-case scenario, with intent that once we got out there, once we started driving piling, that we would That is somewhat unique in how plans are put together. Oftentimes, you would've simply said, we're going to assume the worst-case scenario, and the contractor could come back and say, we think we can do it with conventional footings, we want to value engineer this, and through that route, the contractor would then be eligible for half the cost savings. But the approach we took, we directed them to field verify whether we could utilize a conventional driven pile design, and we were. So, we were able to realize the entire savings because it was actually specified that we were going to do the work or determine the footing design in the field.
I see.
Just kind of a general question, the cost savings was money that was already borrowed, so does that now release it for other projects, or does that become our, part of our first payment on the original bond, or?
Both. You can certainly determine that, we'll probably wait and see how other projects come out. Anything that was borrowed in the bond as a whole, and we had multiple projects within that, those are all pretty much finished, so you can either put that into a payment, so to speak, and lessen that for one year, or you can do another resolution if it's something that's not similar enough to what we bonded for and reallocate it towards that. So, if this holds sewer, it could be that. But again, we want to confirm, because when we first did this and Jennifer, I had a long discussion about this, the first bond we did was a water bond, only for the water main, and we bonded for more than what was needed as total water, so we had to allocate some of this into that to make it whole. So, we still have to vet this is completely 235,000 yet, or is it partially already taken care of because of the water bond? And bond attorneys helped us through all that, but we had to make that whole first, that first payment for Bramer when we did it, and this is the only place we could take it from at the time. So, we'll make sure the transfer is correct and then we'll see what the balance is, and at that point in time, we do budget in January, you'll have your opportunity to look at, should this be applied towards another project or used to take the debt down, which on a $700,000 payment per year, it's only going to hit it a little bit, but still, it would help. So, you absolutely have the option for either.
Okay, any other questions, comments? It just absolutely feels good that it's reached completion and total fruition. Voc vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Roth.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Resolution 19-180, accepting the Cedar River Parkway East improvements 2018 is complete, is hereby approved. Resolution 19-181, resolution approving the special assessment proceedings for the replacement of substandard water and sanitary sewer, sewer services as a part of the Fourth Street Southwest Iowa number 116 and 10th Street Southwest improvement projects in setting November 18, 2019, 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall as the date, time and place for a public hearing. Entertain a motion.
I would move approval of resolution 19-181, if read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made, second, council discussion, questions?
Well, I'm, I'm not going to extend our meeting here tonight, I've done that enough already, but I think you all know my objections to some of the assessments that are made of adjoining property owners, particularly residential property owners, when the assessments for these projects are probably multiples of their annual real estate tax. And we can discuss this, this will be coming up again at the next council meeting, but, you know, I do have some concerns about this and how those assessments are calculated and who should be responsible for paying the assessments. I think these are things that really discourage people from investing in neighborhoods where there is aging infrastructure, because if they know that they are going to be assessed for new sewers, new water systems, new sidewalks, new streets, that it's going to be very difficult to have people move into these areas when they can purchase residences in areas where those kinds of assessments are not going to happen for maybe 30 or 40 or 50 years. So, but I, I will support the setting of a public hearing.
Any other comments, questions? Voc vote, please.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Resolution 19-181, resolution approving special assessment proceedings for Fourth Street Southwest and 10th Street Southwest in a public hearing for November 18, hereby approved. First reading of ordinance 1067, an ordinance adding and removing authority for traffic control devices and adopting the revised appendix E. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the first reading of ordinance 1067, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made, second, and council discussion?
I just have one question, in the big long list of all of the traffic signals, when it says ordinance number 1067, are those the ones that had been left out of previous lists? And this is the first time they've been listed?
Yes, they were actually on the, they could've been on the appendix, but they may not have had any reference to an ordinance. So, they could, the ordinance could exist, but they didn't have it listed on the, on the sheet. And most likely, it is somewhere, but rather than try to do every one of those and search them back?
Just put them in this one.
We just put it in this one to reaffirm everything.
Gotcha.
So, they're not new ones or ones we're taking away, they're just catching everything up.
Right, the, the new ones, we actually identified so that you would know the four new locations that we put up new signs.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
I was amazed at how many stop signs we have in this town.
I just, yeah.
It's a lot of stop signs.
I spent quite a bit of inventory to drive around.
Thanks to Dee, she did all the inventorying for us and put it on a spreadsheet, which allowed me to then take the spreadsheet and compare it with what we had before. And then, thanks to Paige for cleaning it all up at the end and putting it in order, so.
Is this all going to be included in our new, like, GIS system that keeps track of where everything in town is?
Could.
Would it make sense to do that?
The reason I did it with the spreadsheet is so we could search it manually, too, so it could, it could be put in, it would just have to be input, inputted.
I guess I missed where in the ordinance the, the new locations are identified. You said there were four?
Um...
I thought you just said there were four new locations.
One of them would be at Cedar Lane and Second Avenue Northeast.
So, they, it didn't get the rest of the resolution, or you injected in the exhibit?
That can be researched for the second reading.
Yes.
Okay, that's great, yeah, no problem.
Any other questions, comments? Voc vote, please.
Hengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Roth.
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
First reading of ordinance 1067, adding and removing authority for traffic control devices is, and adopting revised appendix E is approved for the first reading. Brings us to staff updates.
Uh, yes, I do have a few for you. First of all, today was the last day for the golf course being open for the season, so now we are looking at our seasonal hours for the pro shop, which is Tuesday through Friday, 9:00 AM to noon. So, that, those hours will be in effect until we open up again next season. Then, the second thing is another reminder of the candlelight walk this Saturday, November 9th. The walk will actually be from 5:00 until 7:00 along the rail trail, starting at the trailhead just behind Quick Start East. It goes out a mile, there's a bonfire out there at the turnaround point, there'll be some treats and hot chocolate. It's a family event, dogs are welcome, need to be on a leash, but, yeah, seems to be a lot of fun for everyone. If anyone's interested in helping to set up, we are setting up at 3:30 and we'll just meet at the trailhead. And then, the last thing I have tonight is, I don't know if anyone had noticed in the lobby or not, but the globe is gone, the Enough for Everyone, the food donation globe, those, we had five around the city, and they have all been moved to the community sharing gardens. So, the globes were actually taken off their stands and now they've been placed in the ground, it's kind of a neat scene, actually, so if you get a chance to drive past the gardens, take a look. The plan is for them to stay out there until they've been weathered too much, I guess. So, but they should last for quite a while.
Garrett, I had a couple of people ask about the volunteering to set up for the rail trail event.
Yes.
And I don't know if you're going to put that somewhere where people can look it up, I mean, or if you're just announcing it here where not everybody will be listening?
Nope, it has gone out on news releases.
Okay, all right.
And then, they're, they're flyers as well.
Okay, great.
Any other staff comments?
I don't believe we have any, sir.
Very good, council comments?
I had just a citizen contact me about something she'd contacted me about before, and I didn't go check it out myself, but I'll just repeat it here, and that is crossing at Water Street Grill, what is that, first in Bramer, right? Going east and west, that apparently the countdown for the pedestrian counts all the way down and the light, the light stays green in terms of the vehicular traffic. And that was an issue, I think, before once two, and then it got corrected, and she, she says it's back to not being safe, and she thinks there's one more downtown like that. I, like I say, I didn't verify any of this, but if somebody could check it out, that'd be great.
We have checked on that twice now.
Okay.
DOT has said that is not for people to sit and monitor to cross, it's for them to clear the, the pedestrian walk, it's for the vehicles, et cetera. So, you should be paying attention to vehicle driving, not worrying about when the light's going to change.
No, she's walking.
So, it should be allowing them to clear is why it stays green, so if you're not quite out of there, it's going to give you a few more seconds, but it's supposed to clear. I've got that email from Wave Utilities, I can send to you again, but I know they've looked into it and described that situation, it does do that, but I do believe it's intentional.
And it's doing what it's supposed to be doing now, so that pedestrian is safe?
My understanding, but again, I'll locate that email for you.
Okay, all right.
And some of it has to do with, if the side street traffic clears during that countdown, it's smart enough to know it doesn't need to change the light for the cross street. It's a combination of a couple of things, because I see it on Bramer almost at all the intersections, if there was a car sitting there to wait to come off the side street, makes a right-hand turn, doesn't have to wait for the light change as you're coming down Bramer, it'll count down like it's going to change, but then it doesn't on the side street just because there's no traffic that needs to...
Yeah, but I think this is a different issue, this is where, instead of having a long walk followed by a countdown, there's almost an immediate countdown and then a long pause at the end where you still have a green light with a don't walk symbol for a good, you know, 20 seconds before the flip. So, that, it's a different type, I mean, I know what you're talking about, I've experienced that many times.
Yeah, you described it better than I did, yep.
Yeah, so, and it, yeah, it's exactly the intersection that you're referring to.
So, there's not enough time to get across, is that what she's worried about?
There is enough time, it's just it's, instead of having a walk arrow and then it starts to count down and it turns after the countdown, it counts down first and then waits a little bit before trying.
It's kind of inverse of what it normally would be.
Any other council comments?
I had a couple. One, I was wondering if anyone in city staff could give us an update on the theater. I've had lots of people asking me about, is there anything going on, have you heard anything?
Nothing recently.
Okay, so we got no update on that. I would like to congratulate, I believe it's Officer Keela Ruth who was sworn in today. It is great to have a new officer, it's great to see another female officer. I'm looking forward to the day when we have females in the fire department as well. And anyone who would like to come and discuss city matters with me at the city council meeting, I will be at the wooden foot.
A reminder, we have an election tomorrow, and if you haven't voted early, please vote tomorrow. This is a so-called off-year election, typically the turnout is light because of that. It'd be nice if Waverly had set a record for a high turnout in an off-year election, so that's tomorrow.
I would just add to bring your driver's license.
Yes. And if you have moved so that your address is not the correct one that is on your driver's license, make sure that you have, I think it's two, two pieces of official mail that have, has your correct address on. I know there have been a number of people who have had to chase down paperwork to be able to vote.
I have one more question, not a comment, if I could. The CUNA building, maybe, and the old CUNA building, is there any update on that? And if I, if you would remind me what the mix of, mix of housing is in there?
Hopefully, by the first part of the next year, it'll be renting. It is a 34-unit structure with four market-rate apartments and 30 that would be at the mixture between 60 and 80 percent tile.
But there are four at market rate?
Four at market rate.
Okay.
Hey, any other comments, questions from council? Nick, we got you through the first meeting, do you have any, any comments or questions at this point?
I do not, it was, it was interesting to see all the discussion and everything like that, it's, it's just fun to see.
Thank you. I did have the pleasure this morning of swearing in our new police officer, Keela Marie Ruth. She's almost a local gal, she comes from, her parents run the Frederica Locker, and so she's been around in various locations, but she's coming back close to home and welcome her to her for, to the force, even though I screwed up the oath a little bit at the end this morning, and I apologize for that, but we got through it, and she was in her uniform and ready to go, and they quickly demoted her to third shift. But I understand that's where all, virtually all of the new officers start from, so we welcome her to, not only to the police force, but to the community. So, other than that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So, move?
Second.
Question made to adjourn, all the close in favor say yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned.